All right, six o'clock. Calling the meeting to order, December 20, 2022. Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cloven.
Here.
Councilmember Tillman.
Here.
Councilmember Trupiano.
Here.
Vice Mayor Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Juan.
Here.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is closed session. I will open the floor to public comment for closed session if anyone would like to speak or anyone online. Do we have anyone in the lobby?
Mayor Juan, I do not, I do have one hand raised to speak on the closed session item. I will promote Jeremiah Lee to panelist and you will have up to three minutes to speak. Hopefully, he's coming over now. Okay. Jeremiah, please unmute and you will have up to three minutes to speak.
Hi. This is Jeremiah. This is my first time to join the city council meeting and I just wondered if I can bring, what is the situation regarding the funding for the homeless? And what were percentages of by comparison in Clayton?
Thank you. I think your comment was regarding funding for providing services to homeless and there was one other part that I couldn't catch, but I think we'll take a note of that and maybe follow up if possible. If you could send your question via email, that would also be helpful so that we could, so that we could better address it more accurately.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any other hands raised for public comment on this item.
All right, I will close public comment and go to closed session. You can let me know when we are in closed session. We are coming back from closed session and there are no reportable items at this time. We will continue the closed session at the conclusion of this meeting. So, right now, I'd like to call the, call the meeting to order. It is seven ten. And Dana, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cloven.
Here.
Councilmember Tillman.
Here.
Councilmember Trupiano.
Here.
Vice Mayor Diaz.
Yes, here, I'm here. I'm trying to get this volume up. I got it.
Mayor Juan.
Here. Thank you. Thank you. Item four, item five on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does anyone have any items that they wish to pull for discussion? Seeing none, a public comment on the consent calendar? Anyone in the room have any comment on the calendar or anyone in, on Zoom?
Mayor Juan, there are no hands raised on Zoom for this item.
Excellent. I will close public comment and looking for a motion for the consent calendar.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Dana, would you call the roll, please, or the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Cloven.
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman.
Aye.
Councilmember Trupiano.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz.
Yes.
Mayor Juan.
Aye. Thank you. There are no recognitions and presentations, so I will move on to reports. Right now, I would like to ask Mr. Hayden to present his report. He asked to present as a representative for CCA. Would you like him to go first? We had him there. Oh, wait, he was item C. Yes, as a guest, I would, if you would like to go, that would be great.
All right. I wanted to give you the annual report from the County Connection. I try to give a report at least twice a year, just bringing everyone up to speed on the issues that they're working on and things of interest to Clayton. So, I did want to point out that we accomplished a number of things. And again, I'm the city representative to the Board of Directors there at the County Connection. And they've been working on some of these items for quite a while and they were able to complete that. And I'm glad to report the very first one is a fleet conversion plan to zero emission vehicles by 2014. And they anticipate then that the authority will use a combination of hydrogen-powered buses and electric buses to meet the state's zero emission goal. This plan includes all necessary facility upgrades, electric charging infrastructure, hydrogen fuel infrastructure and concurrent planning process that matches the fuel types with the route. So, they completed all of that planning and the additional purchasing now is underway. Next item is that the County Connection and the Livermore-Alamo Valley Transportation Authority, ALAVCA, had consolidated their respective paratransit services under one contract, TransDev, that's managed by the County Connection. This new consolidated contract was initiated last July and extends for five years. The partnership between the agencies provides for a much more seamless transportation experience to the most vulnerable in our communities that has added a real benefit to reducing costs through economies of scale. This partnership was tested for a year as a pilot program to ensure its success before making it permanent this past July. So, this was a combination of the two different authorities using their resources efficiently together. Next item is that the County Connection extended the one-seat ride pilot project that I explained last time I was here, which connects four East Bay operators with a single door-to-door ride for paratransit-eligible passengers that need to cross transit districts to complete their trip. For example, a paratransit user living in Antioch can now travel from their home to a medical appointment in Walnut Creek in one vehicle without having to transfer a number of times from one transit system to another. This is a significant way our partnership with our neighboring transit agencies helps the most vulnerable in our communities, which many of us may rely on eventually ourselves. So, we want to get all that set up and tested. County Connection is one of the critical organizations that provides emergency mitigation during a recognized disaster. As a result, the authority is required to implement an emergency operations center, EOC, at the division during a disaster that may require transportation services as a mitigating factor. In order to guarantee operational viability for the EOC, the authority replaced all of their facility generators with a new upgraded system sufficient to power all of the facilities this past year. And they also were very happy to announce that they ratified contracts with two of the three major unions with the further union, the third union, expected by the end of this week. And that represents both the Machinists and the Teamsters. And that would indicate we'll have probably very little as far as labor issues and have labor peace for the next three full years with these unions. That's a significant milestone in today's economy. Next item is looking at the overall system itself and how it's recovered from COVID-19 and, and the route performance system-wide. The overall ridership through the first 10 months of the year is up 10% over the same time period last year, which represents a 66% pre-pandemic ridership. Now, this is returning to what it was, only 66% of what it used to be, but it is 10% more than last year as people began to return to work. Some of the demographics have made a strong rebound while others are seriously lagging. One strong segment is the school trips, which gained 96% of the pre-pandemic passengers, while commuters on express routes have only gained 35% of their pre-pandemic numbers. Now, a lot of that is attributed to changing business structures as well that allows many more people to work from home. Also, the weekend ridership has seen a very strong return, reaching 76% of the pre-pandemic levels, while the weekday routes are still at 62%, just barely over 50%. One notable route, 314, which is the weekend fare-free route through Monument, has exceeded the pre-pandemic ridership by 10% as more and more people get used to that dependable transportation up and down Monument. And then I wanted to focus on items of particular interest to Clayton and our route system here. Through the pandemic and as the region recovers, we've made sure that Route 10, which is the main route from Clayton, starting up at the middle school all the way through to the Concord Bart, has remained in service. Even though ridership fell off a bit, we wanted to continue to let people rely on that service. So, we reduced the service a bit, longer stretches between buses, but kept the route in service so that it was there for those riders that did want to use that transportation. And as a result, that ridership is up 21% over the same period last year and is up to 84% of the pre-pandemic ridership. And it's performing much better than the overall system, which is just averaging 66%. Through the first 10 months of the current year, the weekend route, which is 310, 310 is the same route as 10, but it, we've extended it now to the weekend. And that was originally to deal with the increased interest in people hiking into Mount Diablo during the pandemic, when we saw a big increase in the people coming in, particularly in the Regency area, which you dealt with, with your parking issues. So, many more people were taking the bus and we extended that traffic there to Bigelow and the middle school. And we run that service then during the weekend as well. That just approved, improved about 8.9%, but that's because the week, the year before that was the big surge when people were really using that bus on the weekend. For the first 10 months of this year, again, the ridership went up almost 10%. One thing I've asked a couple of times, and I want to emphasize again, the need for a Clayton representative on our advisory committee. And this is a committee that advises the board on issues from a rider's perspective. So, there's four communities that still don't have a community representative, and this is a volunteer position. So, we want to continue to try to see if we can get someone to volunteer and represent Clayton. And I want to close up and just indicate I've enjoyed this assignment. I used to ride the express bus from Mitchell Drive down to San, San Ramon. So, I was very interested that that route be maintained and it was until, obviously, the business climate changed and not very many people were riding it because they were working from home. So, that express bus route has been discontinued, but it, it does run from the Walnut Creek Bart down to San Ramon. So, they take the bus to Walnut Creek and then ride an express bus. It's much quicker. We, and I was very interested in maintaining Route 10 and 310 so that we had reliable transportation, because that's another attribute that we like to promote in Clayton, and that's that our transportation alternatives right here at the Civic Center, I call it the Civic Center of Clayton, is linked up with the bus system and takes you all the way down to the Concord Bart. And then last, I just asked that Vice Mayor Diaz also continue the periodic reports to the council. I think it's interesting and I think it's important that the people of Clayton know what we're doing to maintain that service for them and how we want to make sure it links in with the overall system as well and the system upgrades. So, a lot of information. Wanted to bring you up to speed. The good news is our bus line is still running and is proposed with the next year's budget to continue to provide good reliable service for our Clayton residents. All right?
Thank you. Is there any questions from council?
No questions, but thank you for your service and volunteering for that.
Okay.
Thank you. And I just have one question. Is that volunteering opportunity on our city website?
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you again.
All right.
And now, in the proper order, we can move to the reports from city manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just an update this evening, as we head into the holidays, well, two things. One, we have moved farther along in our finance director recruitment and I have a second interview with a, the top candidate scheduled for Thursday. So, I'm very hopeful that we will have a, a strong candidate to bring on board. The second is city hall is closed beginning this Friday, December 23rd, and it is closed through January 2nd. City Hall reopens on January 3rd and there are emergency or after-hours numbers posted on the, they'll be posted on the website, but they're also posted on the front door in case anybody comes by. And with that, we hope everybody has a safe and not too terribly cold holidays.
Excellent. Thank you. And now to city council reports. Would you like to start off? Councilmember Cloven?
Sure, thank you. Appreciate that, Mayor Juan. Just wanted to start off by saying I went to the December 7th CBCA Holiday Dinner in Hockers. It was awesome to have everybody together again and just, it is a crowded room and good company, a good organization, and they're doing good things for the city. And I'm, I just was happy to be part of that festive occasion. And the following day, December 8th, was a TransPAC meeting, which I chaired that particular meeting because the chair was out on vacation. I served as vice chair of that committee this past year. And there was a, it was a brief meeting, but there was a reorganization to the chair position. And for TransPAC, it's, it's a rotating position. And this year, for 2023, Clayton is scheduled to be the chair of TransPAC. And I was nominated at the last meeting on December 8th as the chair of TransPAC for the coming year. TransPAC is looking at the, our view of the draft Central County Action Plan, which is something, is the plan covers 25 years of long-range planning for Central Costa, Concha Costa County. And that we looked at in the next three months. On December 17th, we had Reeds Across America and it was great to see four of us there, out of the five. It was a cold morning, but beautiful and a wonderful ceremony put on by veterans of four wars. It was, it was just, they did a great job and it was a great ceremony. I also went to that night as a fundraiser for the Rainbow Community Center. It was here in Clayton and there were a lot of representatives and I met some other council members from other cities at that meeting. I've had multiple phone calls, multiple emails, like you, that, that happens. One of the conversations I had recently was with Principal Fong of the Diablo Middle School, and he is searching for some help for crossing guards similar that we have for our, our elementary school. So, I told him I'd bring that up for conversation in the future. And then multiple people have spoken to me about action items on tonight's agenda and I'm sure they're listening as well. So, with that, it's into my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor Juan. My schedule is very similar to councilmember Cloven, so I won't repeat all of them, but, or go into detail. On the 7th, I attended the anti-bias, anti-racist meeting that was with the school district. We have those every month. On the, that evening, I also attended the CBCA Holiday Dinner. On the 8th, I attended the Cal Cities Holiday Dinner that was down in San Ramon. And it was nice to see everybody come out in their festive gear and reindeer ears. It was pretty funny. On the 13th, I attended the Oakley Swearing Inn for my friend Shannon Shaw, who is now a council member. Congratulations. I also jetted down to San Ramon to witness a swearing in of Marisol Rubio, who's also on the San Ramon City Council now. On the 14th, I attended with the mayor our Budget and Audit Committee meeting, and we will give a report out on that later this evening. On the 16th, I attended the Elected Women's Luncheon, which is a monthly meeting that Kim and I both attend now. I also attended the Reeds Across America Ceremony on Saturday morning. And on the 20th, which was today, I met as well as the rest of the council with our consulting firm regarding hiring the city manager and multiple meetings with our city manager. And that's my report.
Councilmember Trupiano? I called him, Councilmember Trupiano.
I wasn't sure if you were, oh, yeah, you're on.
Trupiano Diaz, come on. I was also at the CBCA Holiday Dinner, which was lovely, at Hockers. They did a wonderful job. I also, on Sunday, attended the menorah lighting for the Hanukkah celebration and it was lovely. They did such a beautiful job. And I had a wonderful meeting with our new police chief. He was probably sick of all my questions, but I had a lot of them. We had fun. And I've had weekly meetings with Reyna and a great meeting with Mala. So, thank you for all of your advice and support. That's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Diaz?
Okay, thank you. On the 7th, the, oop.
Your mic.
Testing, one, two. Can you hear me? Anyway, on the 7th, I attended the CBCA volunteer event. On the 14th, attended the Morgan Territory Community, Community Association. And we have several members of that here tonight and we'll talk about them later on the agenda. 17th on Saturday, I attended the Reeds Across America Celebration and honoring those interred at the cemetery out in Concord. On the 17th, excuse me, on the, on the 19th, I had meetings with the police chief and the city manager. And today, I was interviewed by the recruiters from Bob Murray and Associates regarding the process for selecting the new city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the last couple of weeks have been just a lot of meetings that everyone has said, the Reeds Across America, as well as city staff and our outside consultants for the city manager. So, there, there's just a lot of meetings, but hopefully those will come to fruition and we'll have more action to report from them. So, thank you. Right now, I'd like to move to item eight on the agenda, public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anyone in the room that would like to, you could fill out a speaker card or come to the mic if you'd like. Seeing none, if, Dana, is there anyone online that would like to make public comment?
No, Mayor Juan, there is nobody with a hand raised on Zoom.
All right, I will close public comment. And we do not have any public hearings, so we will move to item 10, action items. Mala, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, please. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. For your consideration at the last meeting, Mayor Juan requested that we bring back a resolution to consider amending the Order of Business to move public comment earlier in the meeting and eliminate council reports. Attached for your consideration is the redlined resolution that includes all the revisions. I will point out closed session is attached both earlier in the meeting and then as well as later in the meeting, because sometimes, just as, as has happened tonight, is we cannot finish all items or there's times where we want to meet in closed session later in the evening as opposed to earlier. Happy to take any questions and of course, Mayor Juan is also here to, to discuss the item.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions from council?
Yes, I'd like to hear more detail on the elimination of the council reports.
So, that was suggested, so I guess it's questions to me, not to staff, so we can do that?
Yes.
Yeah, so that was suggested to, for a couple of reasons. One is to make the meetings a little more efficient. I think the things that I would like to focus on are the action items as a result of any of the events or meetings that are attended by council. In the case where that, that may be so, we could address that with either, I think, I don't have the thing in front of me, but either through announcements or a specific report on that item as Mr. Hayden presented tonight. I think that's a really good example of when there's a meeting that has impact or interest to the city, we can make those types of announcements either through, or either I can make them, the city manager can make them, city staff can make them, or we could include them as an addendum to the agenda as we do with a lot of public comments. So, that was the, the intent there. And so, rather than reading a calendar of the meetings that were attended without a specific result, we would focus on those items only where there's an actual action item to be reported out.
So, the intent is to not share with the residents what we've been doing during the two weeks?
Well, if, if it's a, if it's a, like a calendar share, then I think that could be done via a written report and that would be accomplish the same thing.
So, given that I ran on transparency and I think quite a few of us did here, I think we could do both. I think that's a great idea to have it actually in written form for those who don't attend in person, but I don't see any harm in letting these fine folks here and the ones online know what we did, because it took us maybe less than 10 minutes to go through that. It's not really, it's not prolonging the meeting in any way. So, to me, I don't see why we would do that. Anybody else?
Okay.
I'll hold until they get into discussion. Thank you.
I mean, yeah, there's no other questions. That was mine. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I could open the, the item to public comment. If there's anyone in the room that would like to make comment, please feel free.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Certainly, the mayor has a prerogative and the authority to make changes to the agenda and I don't have an issue with the sequencing and changing some of that around, but I do have an issue with the, this particular item, and that's the elimination of the council reports. And this has been an opportunity in the past for the city council members to share their council-related activities since the last meeting. And it's often including city-related meetings where the council member actually represented the city of Clayton. And I think that's important to share that with our community, because very often, the community isn't aware of what the council members do between the meetings. I'm afraid some of the people think that you just attend the two meetings a, a month here for the council and you are very active representing the city. And that includes meetings out of, out of the Clayton area, where you're certainly representing Clayton well. And I think that's important to share that with the community. It's also an opportunity for people to find out some of the issues that you are working on. And I think it, the best source for that information is the actual city council person attending that meeting. And I agree that if you feel it's, the meetings just become a datebook sharing, you could just focus on meetings that truly were related to city issues. That would reduce some of the references to activities between meetings and just keep it related to specific issues dealing with council issues or community issues or area issues that may ultimately result in council action. But I think this is a real opportunity for the council to do a lot of education for the community and for the community to learn what their council is doing between meetings. So, I would hate to see that go away entirely and leave it up to the mayor and city manager to decide what they feel is important to the community. I'd rather share it and let the community make that decision. All right?
Seeing no other hands in the room, is there, Dana, is there any comments in, or hands raised for public comment on Zoom?
Mayor Juan, we do have three hands raised on Zoom. I'll call them in order if the mayor would like.
Please.
First to speak will be Rachel. Rachel, I will momentarily promote you to panelist. You'll be asked to unmute your microphone and you will have three minutes to address
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks. It's, it's actually not Rachel. It's, it's Aaron here, using Rachel Zoom. Anyway, Aaron Levy, resident of Clayton since 2009, and I just want to make a comment. Thanks for, for letting me speak here. The city council is voted on by the people of Clayton and the city council members work hard for all of us and I, I know that. And the reason I know that is because of the council reports. And I don't- And I don't, you know, what former Mayor Hayden said really resonates with me, that, you know, we want to know what the council's doing for us and the council's doing a lot for us. So I don't want to have to go dig through meeting minutes or agenda items or something to find out what's happening. Because a lot of the different things that I've heard the council members report on in their council member reports, you know, have been things I've been interested in. And I really enjoy hearing what our council's out doing, not just in Clayton and with the community, but, you know, outside of Clayton. So just to give you an example, there may be people that don't know that Clayton has a menorah. And council member Trupiano just reported that she attended the lighting of the menorah. So that's something that gets out there to the whole community, well, or the people listening to the council meeting in these. And like council member Tillman said, it doesn't take long. I mean, she said 10 minutes. I think maybe five. So I really, I like the idea of changing the public comment to earlier in the meeting. I think that's a fabulous idea. But getting rid of the council reports, I think, would be a mistake. I would like to have the council keep that as part of the meeting. So thanks for taking the time. Wishing everybody a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Dana, if you would like to promote the next person in line?
Next to speak is Roy. Roy, I will momentarily promote you to panelist. Once prompted, please unmute your microphone. You'll have three minutes to address the council. It didn't, it didn't take. Okay.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me? Yeah, thank you. Hey, good evening. Yeah, by the way, that unmute just came up just as I spoke about us. Anyway. Yeah, regarding the, you know, topic and reporting, I would suggest that the reports be economic in nature, one. You know, many times we just hear a number of things being said, I attended this, I attended that. I'd like, and so you can say, look at, and remind my mind, and we look at it from this perspective, but one is informational, the other one, and the other perspective is deliverable. It's one thing to tend something, but I'll just say, so what? Okay, how would that really adding value benefit to the city? All right, and rather than just saying I attended this, I attended that, what's the value benefit, number one? And is there a deliverable connected to that? What are you going to do about it? So that it just doesn't become a thing that occupies time? And in some instances, some of these reports, these informational items, I'll call them, are just, they go on. They just go on and on. And so the question then becomes, so what? All right, and I'm not trying to be, you know, pejorative or demeaning or, but I want to, you know, be economic, the economic one, too, is it informational? Yeah, it's informational or, you know, there's a deliverable connected to it. So I would suggest to the council to kind of put your head together and say, how can that be managed, done in such a way that we're just not occupying time with a list of things versus deliverable? What's the deliverable that you, that the value add for the city? So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana, if you would promote the next, that would be great. Thank you.
Christine, I will momentarily promote you to panelist. When prompted, please unmute your microphone. You'll have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Wonderful. My name is Christine Muller and I've been living in Clayton since 2004. I, actually, one of my favorite parts of the meeting is listening to what my elected people have been doing on their off time. I love finding out what their interests are and where they put their energy and what type of people they're meeting through these different activities. I'm so looking forward to seeing what Kim's going to bring to the table, what types of activities she'll go and do representing Clayton and coming back and reporting on it. So I really feel, well, Mayor Juan, we know why you don't want to have that part in the meeting because you only say that you do emails. So I understand that and you can continue to do that. But I love hearing all the other council members reaching out into different types of communities. I love hearing Jim with all his patriotic things that he does. So I strongly suggest that we keep that as part of our meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have further hands raised? Yes.
Multitasking, sorry. Jim, I will momentarily promote you to panelist. When prompted, please unmute your microphone. You will have three minutes to address the council.
Whatever happened, I must have hit a button, but I have no questions or comments.
Thank you. Do we have any further hands raised?
Mayor Juan, we have no further hands raised on Zoom.
All right, I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Councilman Clubin, you had indicated you would wait for discussion. Would you like to lead us off?
Thank you, Mayor Juan. I appreciate that the fact that you brought the public comment up last year to bring it up to the front of the menu. I respect as mayor, your prerogative to bring that to the front this year. And I'm in full agreement that that could be done. I respectfully disagree with the removal of council reports. Again, I get that your brevity with regard to phone calls and emails and no report is your style. That's fine. And I, but when I have phone calls and emails from constituents, I try very hard to talk about the content of what those phone calls and emails are so that people know that when people are contacting me, they know what that's about. And for instance, even the conversation with Principal Wong about the crossing guard, that's a content thing where it was, this is an email conversation dialogue where I get to tell what people are concerned about. And I often tried to do that, tell in my reports, hey, I spoke with so-and-so and this is their concern. I think the council report time is a perfect time to bring that up within that two-week period. This is who spoke me and this is what their concern. You bring it up so it's addressed. That's number one. Number two, I tried very hard in the past year to be respectful of you and everybody else and allowing you to have voice during your time, to speak and show how you're representing. And it was your choice to speak how you desired. And I would have challenge having that voice removed from your fellow council members at this time. I will give you an opportunity to move that, as you have in this agenda, to the back if you desire, so that people who do not want to hear, if you think it's a challenge, could leave. But I would respectfully disagree with the removal of reports altogether. So thank you.
Okay. I thought you
Were you going to say something to that? I don't know.
You know, the idea wasn't necessarily to remove the voice. I mean, we're having the discussion now and in every item that I think is significant, there's an opportunity to discuss those. When we're talking about, like, for example, the crossing guard, I would imagine that there's a possibility you may raise this as a potential issue to discuss for future agenda items. And that would be, that would be a great place to have that introduced and then discussed at a future meeting. The idea, as I kind of mentioned earlier when we, you know, prior to public comment, was that when it becomes a calendar read, I think it's not as effective or judicious use of time. I do think the outcomes of meetings that we attend are important to get out. And so to the extent, like, I think, that's why when, when Mr. Hayden reached out earlier this week, last week, and asked if he could, you know, give his report outside of public comment because he had more to say than three minutes, I said, that's great. We can do that. And I think anytime that were, you know, anytime there's something significant or even announcement, like, you know, I think when I was working this through with Mala, one of the examples I used was, you know, the library book sale, or sorry, used book sale happens periodically. Great place to do an announcement. It's of interest to people in the community. It's something that, you know, we want to, we want to publicize the date. I think those things are great. Things where the board of supervisors is having a meeting regarding CEMEX and, you know, we want to inform people that this is where you can go and when. I think those are, those are great things to report out. There, I think there are things over the past four-ish years that, you know, that I've seen that are primarily a calendar of like, you know, we attended this meeting on a certain date and, or I met with Rena. I meet with Rena every week, but, you know, I don't, there's no reason to share it because I'm not sharing the contents of our meeting other than, you know, just regular business. And so to the extent that there isn't something to report, I find that the time could be better used, especially given, you know, some of the things that we will have to be talking about. And tonight's a good example. We're, we're at 8 o'clock. We're going to have closed session after this meeting as well. And so in the interest of being efficient with everyone's time, that's, that's the, that was the direction I was going. Now, I do think that having that report out could be useful. And so if, you know, if we want to be very clear on what we're doing and if people are interested, having that, you know, in a written document and then easily attached as we do with some additional comments as an addenda to the meeting, it makes it a lot more accessible to people anyways. You'll have the audience here, you know, we can see how many people are here online and there are folks that will watch the recordings. But for all the time spent via watching, or sorry, listening to, to the report outs, you can, you can get the same, I feel like you can get the same information in the written format much quicker. And so that, that makes it, that gives people an open canvas, I guess, to, you know, really be thoughtful about what they're saying and what they want to report out. And then it becomes part of the record so that you don't have to watch a video to find it. It'll always be available. That's, that's really the idea there. It's not necessarily to, or it is not to, to cut off the ability to give those report outs, but it's to make it, you know, as efficient as possible, as thoughtful, and then it's all in a written format. If that's, if that's what people choose, then it makes it easier to access for people as well. So that's my thought around that.
The intent probably was not to eliminate the voices of your fellow council members, but I think in essence, that's what you're doing by not allowing us to speak. And I think the reason why it's now almost 8 o'clock and we haven't gotten to the meat of our agenda is because we're discussing our voices being silenced. So it's kind of a catch-22 that the meeting's actually running long today because of this. So, so my, I said it already, I think that it, to me, it would be a mistake to eliminate the five to seven minutes or so that it takes for us to report out. I do like the idea of having it in written form as well. But to the extent that people are actually listening in, there's no reason not to allow them to hear what we've been doing. And I think that you were kind of pointing the phrase like, meet everybody where they are, meet the residents where they are. I think this is one. There's people here in the audience now tonight. There are people online. And to Mr. Correa's, Correa's, Correa, I hope I'm pronouncing your last name correctly, his comment about what are the deliverables, why, it just sounds like you're just giving a report out. I'll tell you, from my perspective, when I'm out and about in the region and attending all of these events, I'm able to interact and connect with other council members from other cities as well as supervisors and congressmen, et cetera. And I think for me, the key for doing that is not just to hobnob with people. It's actually to build relationships with them so that if I have a question about something that's happening in their city, I'm not just cold calling somebody that I don't know. For example, I mentioned the last meeting that I had reached out to several cities to ask about their rotations and how they do the mayor rotations and the vice mayor. To me, that's critical information for me to glean from those other cities without me having to just go research on their websites, et cetera. I'm actually getting intel from those actual members on how that worked, what they think works in theirs, what they think doesn't, what changes they would make so that when I come back to this council, it's a more well-informed decision or discussion that we're having. So to me, it's not just wasting time. And a lot of us have other jobs that we do outside of this. I don't think that a lot of people realize that this is really just a volunteer position that we're doing with a small stipend. So I just want to be crystal clear that I don't think that it's a waste of time for people to hear what it is that we're doing. But I do like the idea of putting it in writing and I think we should do both.
Did you
Well, and again, I do like what Roy Correa had to say. I, I don't think it's necessary maybe to say that we're meeting with Rena every week. And, you know, that's a little bit redundant. I like his deliverable and economical. That's kind of Roy's style, I think. I love putting it in writing so that there's both opportunities. And I absolutely have no problem if we have a time limit and it's related to city business, giving a brief report of what I've done since the last council meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm always open to persuasion. It's, it's difficult if you were to put parameters around it because that's not what we do. And then that, then it's, it's like an exercise of line drawing, which I don't think is a good practice. And I wouldn't want to say this is relevant or not. So that, that doesn't seem like something that would be good to do. I think, you know, perhaps, I think that's a good suggestion that you made about the order, if we put it at the end. I think that could be a reasonable compromise so we don't have, so that the folks that want to hear the action items can hear them more quickly.
I think there's value in that as well because if we get to the end of the meeting and we get to this point where we have the council reports at the end of the meeting, we want to get out here quicker, we'll say it faster. But just as a personal note, back in the day before my planning commission days, I remember listening to a city council report that Councilmember Pierce put out. It got me extremely angry about one of the items that she reported on. And it caused me to actually go talk to her about that item. So, and she was able to explain it. So this is, what we say is listened to by the public. And it's important for it that we get a chance to say it so we can explain it if we need to. So if you would consider moving it to the end and give us the time to speak at the end so we do, I'd be all for that.
The only thing that I can add to this is that I, we've had members of this council that would go on and on and on. And I want to make sure that we, if we're going to continue to have a city council report, that it ought to be crisp and only those things that directly, directly affect or improve the city of Clayton. And some of these do not. I find myself in that same trap going on and on and on. And I'm not in favor of that. But I would like to see if we decide to curtail this, maybe it ought to be for a trial period and see what happens. And if people want to provide written reports, they could do that. They could be entered into the official record.
It's really hard to line draw, so I would just, I guess, it's up to us to be the change we want to be. I would encourage that we do, you know, make the message focused, because I would not want to limit the ability to communicate out. I think that, I do think that's important. And so, I, but again, once the floor is yours, the floor is yours, so you get to, you choose how you would like to use it. So then I guess, I would, I would, is this a, this is a resolution? So I would propose that we could modify the resolution to include council reports. However, we could put council reports, separate council reports from item seven from reports, and move it to after council items.
So Mayor Juan, are you suggesting we would keep city manager and staff reports as seven, keep aid as mayor and city manager announcements and upcoming events, and then create a new item before council items, that is, just council reports?
After council items.
After council items. And can I also suggest, I think the closed session should be right before adjournment. I think I placed it in the wrong order.
That's fine, too. If that's amenable to my fellow council members.
That makes more sense, yes.
Then, if there's, is there any other discussion that we would like to have on this item? Okay, then I would look for a motion with reflecting those changes.
I make the motion that we make the suggested changes, which is moving the council reports behind council items, so that becomes item number 12, it looks like now, and closed session will move to item number 13, maybe? Maybe the numbers are mixed up, but closed session before adjournment, council reports after council items.
And the public comments is going to be at the top again.
Yes, I think that, yes. So, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Dana, would you call the vote?
Councilmember Cloven?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Trippiano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. Thank you. We will now move to item B, the appointment of two members to the Community Financial Sustainability Committee. Reina, would you like to kick off the item?
I will, thank you. The item before you this evening brings forward a recommendation from your Budget and Audit Subcommittee. The Subcommittee held interviews of three applicants for the Community Financial Sustainability Committee, and the recommendation brought forward is to appoint two members, Howard Kaplan and Hank Stratford, and you have all the information in your packet as well as your committee members, should you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
The only question that I have is, we are hoping to get to five people on this committee, correct? And so this would be two, and then we just keep the process open for other applications until, so there'll be no meeting until we get to five?
That's correct. The, on the city's social media sites, we, and the website, we have reposted the request for volunteers for this committee. We will take applications, interview as quickly as possible, and seat a full committee. The committee cannot meet prior to having a quorum of members. I am available to meet with individual members if they are appointed this evening in January to at least begin some orientation. It's public information, I can provide that orientation. The committee just can't sit as an actual committee and do any committee work until they're seated with at least a quorum.
Thank you.
No other questions? I would open this item to public comment. If there's anyone that would like to make comment on this item, now is your time. Is there anyone online that has raised their hand?
No, Mayor Juan, we have no speaker cards, and no one on Zoom has raised a hand on this item.
All right, I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Is there anyone that would like to discuss this item? This is on recommendation from myself and Councilmember Tillman as part of the Budget Audit Subcommittee, so I don't have questions.
I don't either, but I'm happy to answer any.
All right.
Somebody going to make a motion?
So with no, with no.
I will ask the question before I get to the motion. I don't have a challenge with either of the two applicants, thank you for applying, I appreciate that. What is our effort to try to get the word out to find those three other applicants? And is there, how are we doing that? And are we, as the five of us out there, talking about this position is open and trying to get people to apply? And so, that's the question.
Reina, if you'd like to share your efforts at this, and then we can answer that more fully ourselves, but I know that you've taken steps yourself, so if you'd like to elaborate?
Just as I said, that, you know, we have reposted everything on Nextdoor, Facebook, as well as the city's website. Nextdoor does get a lot of, you know, readership in Clayton. We have a very robust Nextdoor community, but anything that any of you can do in your community conversations, and any of you in the audience, please share that information as widely as possible. The more opportunities and locations we can share that, the better, I think.
Thank you. Yeah, I know I've had dozens of conversations with individuals, trying to persuade them of the glory that they could have. And we shall see if that bears fruit.
I've done, I've done the same, and unfortunately, either they're too busy to do it and commit, and they cannot, and I think they'd be phenomenal, or they were outside of the city limits. So, yeah.
So the quest continues?
I move to accept the two applicants in this.
I'll second.
Thank you. Dana, would you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Cloven?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Trippiano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. All right, and with that, I am pulling out some tea, too. We will move to item C, discuss city council committees and assignments. Reina, the floor is yours.
Mayor, the floor is yours.
Oh, it says city manager right here, but anyway.
I am transmitting the information, but the recommendations are requests from you in terms of assignments, et cetera. So, back to you.
All right, thank you. I will assume that the materials have been read, so I will open for questions of staff or any questions in general. I'm watching your finger move.
No, no.
Oh, you go.
Okay. I don't know, I want to get into further discussion on some of the committees, so it's probably a better way to the discussion, we'll talk about it then.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to ask the questions now. Can we, can you elaborate a little bit more on the rationale for the eliminations and the additions that were made?
Okay, I'm going to go to the grid so I can see it more clearly.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Give me one moment. All right. And I'm going to have to make my screen really big. Okay. So there were, there were four committees or ad hoc committees that were suggested for elimination, so we could talk about those first. The Public Safety Committee was the most straightforward, because as an ad hoc committee, we did not renew, and you can't have a standing committee without, or we could make it a standing committee, but it was an ad hoc committee, so just by virtue of time, it's not a committee that would continue in perpetuity. If we wish to make it a permanent committee, I think that's fine, if we wanted to, but when I saw it as an ad hoc, I know that procedurally, we can't have, you know, continuing an ad hoc. So that was that one. We are proposing, so just for the audience, if you don't have the grid in front of you, I had proposed to eliminate the three other committees, the Downtown Activities Committee, the Economic Development Committee, and the Endeavor Hall Marketing Committee. I will take these in order of what I think is the most straightforward. The Economic Development Committee was primarily set up, if I recall, there's also in the agenda packet, there's a description of all of these, so I'm doing this from memory. The Economic Development Committee was set up to market city-owned properties for sale or development, and so we're not doing that. So I proposed to eliminate, that was that one. The Endeavor Hall Marketing Committee, you know, we have, you know, there's primarily one main vendors, the wrong word, one main user or one main group that utilizes Endeavor Hall, and so I think that, I thought that could be, that could be handled with, either within an existing committee or just via city staff. It didn't really require a standing committee to handle that effort, and it got not a lot of activity there anyways. And then the Downtown Activities Committee was, I want to make sure I read this one correctly, so that I have it here. That one seemed to be subsumed within other committees as well, so while I think the activity is still important, it didn't need to be its own, its own committee. So that was that one. Oh, sorry. And then moving on to the additions. You're right. Okay. There are three proposed ads as well. One is the Ad Hoc City Manager Recruitment Committee, which you and I are on. So we should continue that until we have filled the city manager position. Because last year, we established that the Concerts in the Park was a standalone activity for the city, or sponsored by the city, I thought it would be prudent to have dedicated resources to managing that activity in a way that was more formalized. I think it may have been an informal activity among various council members and city staff, and here, as we designate specific representatives, and it formalizes that process. I think there's a lot of structure and process that needs to be in place or put in place regarding this activity as it's a city-run thing, and I think at our last meeting, when we talked about the concerts, one of the things that we know is done in a suboptimal way is how we account for the funds, and so in this manner, this will help give structure to that as well. And then, oh, and then the last proposal was an internship training committee. Now, this is kind of a, this is kind of a trial. I don't know if this will be successful or not, but, you know, I think that there are resources in the community, not just the city, but in somewhat of a larger community, either the local community college, or even at the, you know, CV has a public works, or sorry, not public works, my bad, School of Public Service, and, you know, I think that there may be opportunity to pull resources from here, both to give, you know, that may provide school credit, as well as give the city, you know, avenue into getting resources to do various work at the city, and so kind of a win-win thing. I know that, sorry, I know that Kim has done similar work in the past, and so, you know, in discussion, you know, it was mentioned that this could be an opportunity, and so I want to try to explore whether or not this is something that may add value to the city. Both give the city resources, give it opportunity for young folks to get potentially school credit, and then, you know, see where that goes. It may fail spectacularly, but I, you know, want to try all the things, so that's what that is.
May I jump in here and go back to one of the committees?
Sure.
That's now being reactivated, and that's the.
Is this a question or discussion?
I'm going to make a, no, no question, I'm going to speak about it. Or you want questions now?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll wait till at the end of the discussion, because I have some comments I want to make.
Excellent.
So getting back to your Concerts in the Park Committee, you know, I'm curious into, this committee would actually manage the concerts in parks, including soliciting and securing bands and sponsors, permits, et cetera. So this has been done pretty well for the last 12 years by three former council members. They've done, they've done three past mayors, they've done a fabulous job for the past 12 years. So is there a change in the management structure of this, when you perceive?
Yes. And so, as, one of the things that we had talked about last year was the actual arrangement of the concerts in the park, and so as a city-sponsored event, you know, I want to, this is meant to give structure around the administration of the program as a city event, so it would be led in part by the committee, but then also through city staff.
So, I'm just getting clarification around your previous statement. You had made a comment that there were some challenges with the finance arrangements in the budget, and I appreciate that, thank you. But how does this committee's new arrangement change the way it's being done and passed that has nothing to do with the money that it's been so successful?
Yeah, those are separate, those are, those are, those are separate items, I'm not, if I was tying, if I gave the impression I was tying those together.
The way it's written, it ties it together very clearly, and I'm trying to get some clarity around that. So if you want to move that to discussion, I'd be glad to. I'm open to public comment, but that's, there's, your concern and what's written are two different things, and I'm just pointing that out.
If I may speak about that, because I've been around since the beginning of the concerts.
Absolutely, I give you full credit.
They have always been operated by the city council and a city council member. After a period of time, I would say probably after five or six years, seven years, when there was no city council member overseeing it, it drifted away and went off on its own. It is completely operational by the city. All the money is run through the city, they issue the contracts, they issue the checks, they receive the money, they account for the money, and they disperse the money as necessary. And there has been very little, what I would say, week-to-week, month-to-month oversight in terms of how charges that the city incurs have been reimbursed, and that needs to be reestablished with the city council oversight. And I think that's what the goal here is, to do just that. And it somehow, again, got, it slipped away from the, see, it was originally incorporated as part of a city council, and somehow it, somehow it slipped away, and now it's time to bring it back under the auspices of the city with more direct oversight.
Okay. Nope.
Go for it.
So, I'm going to belabor this just a little bit before we go to discussion, just to understand. So in the description, it reads, "To manage the summer concerts in the Grove Park. Activities include soliciting and security, securing bands and sponsors, working with city staff on permits, and other administrative efforts as needed." So it's the activities include soliciting and securing bands and sponsors. Why is, why would that be something that the council members would do, that the committee would do?
Because, I mean, there's no why, I mean, it's really just a preference.
Okay, so your preference now is for the city council to now take on the role of having to secure sponsors for the concerts in the Grove?
I would think, so the way, the way that I would interpret that is, it's not necessarily solely responsible for all of those activities, but it would be the liaison point to have oversight or manage those activities. So it could be, you know, I know that there are folks that have been doing it, like Mr. Geller has been very active in this role. in this role. And so to the extent that, you know, if, if there's a desire to keep that done, that's fine, but it would be under the auspices of direction from the city. So that's really where that would go. So, you know, if, if Mr. Geller acts as a, for lack of a better term, like a concert promoter.
Promoter.
A promoter. Yeah, he can do that. Or, you know, however, however the, this committee sees fit in doing the promotion, that would be at the discretion of the committee, working with city staff. So that's, that's the intent, is to formalize that relationship.
Nope, I'm still going to ask again. Okay, so given how it's been since it started for 15 years now, I believe almost, with Mr. Geller being the promoter, are we now saying that we're taking that responsibility, it's up to the committee to take that away from him if they so choose, and they can, they can start running the, the Concerts in the Grove series themselves? Is that the intention?
Yes.
Why? Why are we doing that now, I guess is my question? What is, what is the point of that?
The, the intent is to, I mean, I could, it sounds like I'm repeating myself.
Well, I'm not sure, well, I'm going to actually ask Vice Mayor Diaz if he doesn't mind, since he's intimately involved in, in running these for years, and thank you so much for doing it. I'm trying to understand why we're making the change now.
So I will say mine, and then you can say yours?
Sure, yes, please.
So the intent that I have here is, again, to formalize the relationship that the council would have, working with city staff and working with whoever may be the promoter. So that's the intent, that's the why.
Okay.
And again, long before your participation on the, our election of the city council, it was run by the city council. And then somehow it slipped away, and now it's time to bring it back, because the city is responsible for that. It ensures the concerts. If anybody was to get hurt, they are covered by the city insurance policy. All checks, contracts, monies are run through the city, and there has been no direct oversight from the city council. Time to bring it back.
I love oversight. I think it's great. The timing of this sounds a little suspect to me, but we could talk about that after. It's not another question, so I'll wait.
And I'm kind of of the opinion that if it's not broken, why do we need to fix it? There are some financial concerns which you brought up, which I felt are legitimate and can be resolved. But as I watched the last concert series this past year and saw how successful it was, with not only the quality of the bands that were selected and the way it was presented by our, our promoter, I was very impressed this, this past season. It was well, well, well-received. So making changes to the way things are done just seems a little suspect. So I just want to just be, be clear that I'm, I'm glad to fix financial concerns you may have, but I'm also very glad the way it's being run now. I'd be tricky to change that.
Again, no matter, we're not questioning the success of the event. It's the oversight, and the responsibility is the city. The city takes full responsibility of that, and there's not been a city council member running that event or overseeing it. It's time to bring it back. We lost control over it. The city council lost control over it several years ago.
I think we've gotten, I think we've gotten into discussion right now, so let's go ahead and open up a couple of comments.
I'm going to, I'm going to move us to public comment. If there's any, anyone in the room that would like to make comment, now is your time. Please.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, when I read through this long item of all the committees that were going to be retained and some added and some deleted, this is the one that caught my eye. It's the Concerts in the Park. And I was very interested to hear the discussion, it's already occurred, because I was listening for the reason that this is coming up now. And when I read the definition of the intent, or the, the marketing intent of the concert series itself, to manage, I mean, excuse me, the overall purpose of the committee is to manage the summer concerts, which include then soliciting bands and securing bands and working with the city staff on permits and sponsors, which doesn't get to one of your major concerns, and that's the financial aspect and how that was being tracked, which can be certainly dealt with as a necessary upgrade for the city's concerns, if that was the driving force behind this. But the way this is written now, the committee is taking over full management of the concert series, to include going out and asking for sponsors and doing all the things that the current promoter is doing. So I'm concerned that you're proposing that two council members, who I don't think have managed an event quite this size, are being asked to then lead this effort to manage the overall event. I'm concerned also with the timing, with it being now, we're approaching the first of the year, when a lot of these contracts have already been entered into with the musical groups, and it seems like we're halfway into our planning process, and you're going to be switching horses, more or less, giving over the full management responsibility to the committee. And I question the committee's ability to pick that up and run a successful campaign this next year. Clayton is very attached to this concert series, very popular with our residents, and a lot of people come in from out of the actual city limits of Clayton to enjoy our event. I'm concerned what would happen if the event isn't run as well as it has been in the past. And I suggest that if the financial element is what you really want to address, that can be addressed separately from entirely changing the management structure. Or you could work with the current promoter and get them involved in training possibly the people that you're asking to take over as management. I think the transition period is going to be critical here, because the concert was really getting up and running full-time this last year, and everyone was looking forward to a full season coming up. And I hate to raise these expectations of another very well-run concert series if we can't meet that expectation. So I think it takes some more planning. I understand your concerns, but I think it might be premature to totally take over full management of the event. And you might start off with focusing on the city getting involved in the financial structure. And as Vice Mayor Diaz noted, they used to be more involved with the finances. And if that's a concern, focus on that to start with. And get more involved possibly in restructuring the seating. I've heard some suggestions on some changes that may occur. I'm concerned about how much authority this committee would have to make decisions that may change what we're used to down there at the, at the Grove, and to find out what authority they are going to be given, and if that should come back to the full council. And it sounds like the council does have the authority to take over management. I don't know that there was ever a real strict definition of the role of a promoter and how that has developed over the years. I mean, from the outside, the whole event is run very well. But I think it, if the financial element is a concern, focus on that first, and then work on improving or changing some of the other aspects of the event, if you feel that is appropriate. But I'd say, along with Councilmember Colvin's statement, it's, it's something that's working very well, and I hate to disrupt that unless we have something better already planned. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have a visible timer, so I, so I, it's fine, it's not a big deal. We don't, we don't have a visible timer, so we have to, we still have the three minutes, but we'll, you know, we'll endeavor to, to soldier on. Is there any other public comment in the room? Dana, is there anyone online that has their hands raised?
Mayor Juan, we do have one speaker in Zoom who would like to speak. Roy, I'll momentarily promote you to panelist. When prompted, please unmute your microphone. You'll have three minutes to address the council. Roy, please unmute your microphone. You have three minutes to address the council. Roy, can you please unmute your microphone? We can see you but can't hear you.
Okay, here we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, good. Yeah, okay. To, you know, the concert in the, you know, in the Grove, I think to me and maybe a lot of people, at least a lot of people I know locally here, neighborhoods and all that, is an enigma. People don't get it. We just see, you know, concerts have come, you know, apparently they're successful, and they leave, right? But if you back up, to me, it's a, it's a huge red light, and a flashing red light. And I'm, I'm treating into the liability, okay? You know, some, what happens, you know, and I don't know, I don't know, I'm not in the weeds of this, this, the, the program. But what happens to liability? Somebody falls, walks in the cane, fall down, gets hurt, whatever, you know, what happens there? Okay? And, and we're running it now, and I really don't know, to be honest. You know, we don't get any reporting from them. We have no clue what's going on there. The council, I don't believe, has a clue. You know, some are closer to that program than others. And, but as a resident, as a taxpayer in Clayton, clueless, don't have information. And, and I think it's a legal, financial red light that's just flashing, and we don't know. We need to get in the weeds of that. And I would look to the council to take leadership and get into that now. And that's going to take a little bit of, you know, some work, some, some research. And with respect to, well, we've got a good, it's broken, don't, don't, you know, don't do something that's, that's successful. No, 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 don't, no. All right. It's, we don't even know it's broken and how broken to a degree. We don't know the financials, you know? I saw some trades going out there, you know, in the, in the crowd where money were coming in. Where's that money go? Who knows? I don't know, you know? They're in accounting, and who is, who's in charge of that accounting? Who, who's the manager? Who, who's the financial person? It'd be good to get a clean, you know, financial statement from that program. And, and that's not to diminish the work that's been, that's been done, you know, historically, to make it a successful program. But it's a, you know, we're a city, we're a business, and treat it that way, and not this kind of thing that, well, it's been working and it's okay. No, okay. So anyway, that, that's why, so I think from, and I think Mr. Diaz had some really good points with respect to historically what happened, where it is now. But the bottom line is, and I think it, it's a flashing red legal light that's flashing, and, and, and work needs to be done to get into the weeds of the program, and have the council have oversight, and, and have direction in terms of who owns a program, who, who owns a program. And, and we need the council to take, you know, understand that, make it happen so that we as citizens in the town know, have a comfort level of what, what we're, you know, dealing with. It's a big deal. It's a big deal. It's a big legal deal. And, and so, and so don't diminish the importance of, of, of the, that legality. And, because I think there's a lot at risk, period. So and, and just because, anyway, I think that's, you know, I think that's what I wanted to say about it. And I don't think this should be a situation where somebody's asking for financial and saying, well, you're asking for financial debt doesn't mean to diminish the program or to, you know, I want to get rid of the program. No, accountability, you know? All right.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other hands raised in our virtual audience?
Mayor Juan, there are no other hands raised on Zoom.
All right. I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. There are a number of items here to discuss, so I know that we all have, we all may want, have discussion about the concert item. But I, if we could hold on that for a moment and see if there's discussion for other items first unrelated to the concerts, and then we can, we will continue that, if that's okay. So let's proceed.
If I may, I'm ready to switch gears and get to the, another committee.
Sure.
Unless you want to go on with the concert.
Let's, I know that we will continue discussing the concert item, so that if you could, if you want to go forward with that, and then we will come back to the concert.
Right, we've got some people in the audience that are interested in this item. And if I may, this is the, what's characterized as the, let me make sure I have it correct. It is the Citizens Core Council, also known as CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team. This committee is going to reactivate the CERT team in Clayton. I've already discussed this with the chief and the city manager, and we have a standing group that's ready to join forces with us and help us jumpstart and get back. It's been dormant long, too long, and it's time to get, get back on track with that. One of the major hurdles has always been the training that goes with it. I believe I'm the only one remaining that has the CERT certification. It took several weeks of classroom training and then a eight-hour final examination to actually go through all of the processes and different events that qualify that individual for certification. The one group that is very interested in joining forces with the, with the city of Clayton, because they need a sponsoring agency, either a police entity or a fire department entity. And what we're going to propose here, or what we're suggesting is, is that the police department take responsibility of it. We have a fully equipped trailer sitting out there with brand-new equipment that's been sitting there for at least two to three years, unused, nothing being done. But we have a group of people through the Morgan Territory Community Association. We have two representatives from here tonight. Their president, John Khashabi, and their vice president, Doug Fountain. Both of them have been involved in search and rescue operations, both in this county and in Alameda County, as well as fire fighting activity. Both have been involved in law enforcement and have a good understanding. Of the members, now first of all, let me tell you that there are over 200 members of the Morgan Territory Community Association. Of that group, 10 have been through the entire, now it's online training as opposed to classroom. They have completed that. Those 10 people are waiting for the eight-hour training to be scheduled. When I went through it, we did it over in, in the city of Martinez, and it's a very involved process. So we're waiting on that. There's another 10 to 15 people that are in the process of taking the, the, the online training. Once they complete that, then they will be ready to do the practical examination, again, eight hours on usually a Saturday. Both John and Doug, as I mentioned, have been experienced in search and rescue for both Contra Costa County and Alameda County. They started their own CERT team and now are looking for a place to be sanctioned. And it makes sense to bring them into Clayton. They have been involved, just for your own information, on several of our projects. In fact, the organization has joined the Clayton Business and Community Association as a member. Not that that means, you know, anything formal, but the fact is, is it solidifies their involvement, which they've done over the past several years. They've helped out staffing the setup and tear-down of the art and wine, the barbecue, and in some degree the Oktoberfest. The one thing that they do exceptional, they help us with the CBCA do the decorations downtown. They bring their vehicles and their trucks, and we bring all the gear from the storage facility to downtown, and then their people and ours actually do the decorations around downtown, along with some of our own community members. They will be back in early January, when it's time to take all that down and put them back into storage for another year. But it's not that they haven't been involved, they are involved. But it's not that they haven't been involved, they are involved. And the way I look at it as being sort of the unofficial liaison, one, they're neighbors. Two, that if some catastrophic event happened out on Morgan Territory Road, it would be very simple for that to move over the hill into Clayton. And we are going to need some volunteer assistance over and above the professional police and fire. And the CERT team can fill that need. So with that, I just bring that everyone's attention. And I'm looking forward to their involvement with our department and our city to work on CERT. Thank you.
No, that's great. And to the extent that they're, you know, the committee liaises with our police and others, you know, the more cooperation in that regard, I think the better. Were there other items that we want to discuss outside of the concerts?
Yeah, I appreciate your list of assignments. I want to reiterate what I said during my council report, that there are two of these committees that are on rotating chair basis. One is the East Bay Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy, Habitat Conservancy. And the other is Transpac. And these are rotating seats where Clayton is set to be chair of both of these committees. Last year, Vice Mayor, Vice Chair of East Bay Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy was Councilmember Wolf. And last year, I was the Vice Chair of Transpac. Again, I was appointed Chair of Transpac at the last meeting on December 8th. So it takes some time to understand what Transpac does and how it relates to Clayton and how Clayton benefits from it and the value from it. I understand that you and I had some difficulties or changes in policies with regard to the Marsh Creek Road designation. That's okay. We're allowed to disagree sometimes. It would be a challenge for Kim to get up to speed quickly and definitely to be chair this coming year. And I would respect the request, it's still beyond that committee.
Okay, you mentioned two.
The other one was the Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy. Clayton is supposed to be the chair of that committee this year, and you have Kim appointed. I wasn't on that committee last year, Councilmember Wolf was, so I don't know anything about it. I'd be interested in knowing about it, because my background's in environmental. But if that's something Kim would like to serve on and learn about, I'm sure that we could figure that out.
Would you like to make a comment?
Well, I thought the same thing when you were talking about Transpac in your earlier report. And I personally would be okay being an alternate if you are the chair this next coming year. But I am very passionate about East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy, particularly with my work that I do with Save Mount Diablo. And so, that's not one I'm willing to trade on. But we can have more discussion around Transpac. And again, this is, you know, it's a learning experience for me. And so if it makes more sense for me to be an alternate, I would be okay with that. I certainly have plenty of other assignments. And I do want to make a comment about Concerts in the Park when we come back to that.
Yeah, that's true, definitely. I'm comfortable with that. Like, that seems reasonable to me. I wasn't aware of the rotation, so when you mentioned that in your report earlier, it kind of triggered a light for me, so I think that that makes a lot of sense. So I would suggest that we make the switch, as you both indicated, for Transpac, if you're open to that. Sorry. All right, is there discussion of any other items on here other than the concerts? And we can move to that one, if that's where we want to go? All right. Would you like to kick us off?
Well, and the other thing I just want to say before I get back into Concerts in the Park is, the internship and training, bless you, now everybody's sneezing, get a mask, is that I do have extensive experience with this. I'm on the Diablo Valley Community College Business Advisory Board, and I've used their internship program for more than a decade. So I think there's some great opportunities to bring some business students or otherwise to help us on the city level, and I think it's worth an exploratory committee. Concerts in the Park, I just want to say that with all due respect, I have sold millions in sponsorships in the last decade. And I also managed extensive amount of events at Sun Valley Shopping Center, including Music on the Plaza and Music in Grand Court and a multimillion-dollar holiday program. I think I saw my role with Vice Mayor Diaz on this as an oversight, working with existing volunteers who are already doing the work. Just that we're going, and I misunderstood that, that the council needs to have eyes on this, right? So whether it's financial, I don't even know how much the sponsorships are, what the sponsorship benefits are, what these sponsors are getting in return. I think it would be great to have all of that in writing. Raina and I talked about this even last week. When I hired musical acts, I hired one promoter. I understand we're signing a contract for each band and the lighting guy. Wouldn't it be great to maybe explore that possibility? But I'm willing to work with the volunteers that are already, not trying to rock the boat, but I think the council needs to have oversight on a city-sponsored event on our property. My two cents.
I was just going to tell you that I agree with you. I think when this came to council last year and we were all discussing it, that was part of the concern, is just trying to understand, one, how much staff was using their time to actually, you know, count the money in the bucket, to Mr. Correa's point. So there is, there are council members and volunteers who are involved with that program, who are tasked with actually collecting the funds. I believe the police actually, I'm not going to go into all the details of how it happens, but there are a lot of hands that touch it, and it comes back to City Hall. And we are actually responsible for counting all of that down to the penny and then putting it in the sleeve account that they actually have for the Concerts in the Grove. So there is some type of oversight as far as chain of command on how that money moves from the park into the bank account. But we were very, very concerned in that there was no succession planning. We wanted to understand how that was going to work. And so we did bring up all of the points that Councilmember Trupiano just brought up. Oversight makes sense to me. It was the wording that's in here that says that we were going to be managing it and that it looked like we were going to be tasked. Because I'm sorry, I personally don't want to have to, I don't want the role. So if we're making it to council members, tap me out. So that was my concern, is you're going to have people who rotate around this dais, and they might not want to have to do that. And it sounded like they were going to have to be forced to people to run it. That was why I was questioning it. So the way that Councilmember Trupiano described it makes perfect sense to me. And I would suggest that we change the language and the description of that if she's got it correct. Because that's not how it reads right now. It reads manages. Oversight is not in that description at all. So it looks like we're tasked with actually doing the work.
I think the way that Councilmember Trupiano described it is how I read it. That is how I read it. I mean, if, we could clarify the language, I think. When, ultimately, what I wanted to make clear is that the council has oversight of this activity as a city-sponsored thing, and it does manage this activity. Now, the management could take many forms. Management could be direct management, or it could be overseeing a manager, or a promoter, in this case. In any event, the key component of this is to establish structure and to very clearly state that this is managed by the city and this is how, this is the avenue by which we are doing it. If that management takes the form of overseeing an actual promoter, that falls within, that falls within the description and how I read it. But I may be, may be reading more into it because I wrote it.
Perhaps. I would like to be, I would like to be more explicit in case people aren't, we're not here, and we all get hit by a bus. Someone's going to read this and think that they have to actually manage it and run the Concerts in the Grove.
Well, I mean, let me give an example to clarify, so I'm not a crazy person. Raina, our city manager, manages the police department. But she does that through our police chief. So in this case, similar by analogy, this committee manages the concerts, and they can do that through the manner in which they see fit. And because they have jobs, they will likely, you know, need to do that through the activities of others. But we can clarify that, because I don't think it's necessarily limited to that either. It would not be the case that they do not have the ability to directly involve themselves should the need arise. I think that would, that would be an extant responsibility or ability of the committee. Well, I want to address a couple of things that were said during public comment. The financial issues are important, but that is not the catalyst for doing this. The timing is because we organize the committees annually, so it's always going to be annually. We could do it ad hoc, I suppose, but this is our regular time for doing it. So that's the nature of the timing. I know that there are many bands that have already been contracted for the next year, and the funds are, so there's nothing that is intended to disrupt the activity that is already in flight. I mean, that would be bad. And so the idea really is to create a structure where there is the oversight. It is very clear that this is managed through the city, and these are the agents that we are appointing to do that management. And they would, they would take that appointment and then go forth and execute and deliver the concerts that I think the community loves. So that's the goal. And if it doesn't say that, then we can add language, I'm open to suggestions.
Hi there. Your city manager would like to offer two suggestions.
Sure, please.
In the paragraph that's in the description, substitute oversee for so to oversee, not to manage, the summer concerts. And then say, activities may include, or something to that degree, overseeing and/or soliciting and securing, so that you've got some, both oversight role but also the ability to, you know, hop in, if you will, to, you know, take advantage of expertise that may exist. That combination might meet both objectives, to be more clear about the oversight role, but also not to preclude potentially more direct involvement.
I'm comfortable with that. I would, you're looking oddly down.
So it would read, to oversee the summer concerts in the Grove Park, period. Activities may include overseeing and/or soliciting and securing bands, blah, 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 blah. Just adding a few words.
And while you think about that, I would also suggest some language that describes the financial aspects of it as well. I don't really, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about how to do that, but...
That was the piece to me that's missing, because I thought that the city was supposed to be the fiscal sponsor of the Concerts in the Grove series, but it now sounds like we're changing that relationship. And so I'm going to go back to something that we talked about at the last meeting, which was, I thought that there was some contract, I guess, that we had with the Concerts in the Grove folks, or there wasn't one, was it with the CBCA? Am I confusing things? There was nothing in writing? We were just doing things willy-nilly? Okay, awesome.
Willy-nilly, I would.
I'm being facetious. I'll take it back. I'll take it back. Willy-nilly, I'll take it back.
That's a term of art.
But there is no written contract with a promoter, et cetera. We do have a process for managing the financials, and we do segregate those dollars in terms of how we count them, both coming in and going out. But we could certainly add, you know, to oversee the operations and financial aspects. That's a clunky sentence, but it gets all the words in there.
Sure, financial operations, sounds a little nicer.
Okay, and then did we make any progress at all with the subcommittee of folks that you were talking with about the concerts? Did that, you were supposed to have a meeting with, I thought, with Howard and with Julie and with Councilmember, Vice Mayor Diaz, last year-ish?
I did a year ago, and then I recently did meet with Howard Geller, but just to talk about where we were in the process and to reiterate that city staff don't have really any more capacity to take on tasks or duties associated with the concerts. And that was really the, kind of the bottom line of the meeting that I had with Howard earlier this year.
Great, thank you for that. And the reason why I'm asking is because I just wanted to be sure that that was actually documented in the video, so that we understand that staff is short-staffed and they don't have the capacity to take on any of those roles. So I want to be sure that the committee, and I'm sure you guys are both aware of that, but I wanted everybody in the audience to hear it too.
And I do just want to say, Raina and I had a very lengthy discussion about this last week. Succession planning, the finances, sponsorships. So I think we're on the right track for however we're going to reward it, to have oversight.
It is shocking that we do not have any kind of contract or written document to describe what we're actually, what we're actually doing. So, you know, again, this is all in the interest of having this oversight that we really should have. Because I think the term, we established this term, or we coined this term fiscal agent in the past, but that's not a, that's not a real thing. So we're, it is the city, the city is the one putting on the concert. Like, the whole kit and caboodle, so we just need to, I think we need to make sure that that is, that is done all, like, that there's a structure in place, so it's done all on the up and up. Is there any further discussion on this one, or any other item within this section? All right, I think we need a motion.
I'm going to move that we approve, as submitted, the committee and ad hoc assignments.
Sorry, I would, one thing that we did, I will, I will intercede. One thing that we did suggest and that I think we all agreed to was, the assignment for Transpac was flipped between the primary and the alternate. And I think that was the only change that we made. And then also to the language that we just talked about. So if, if we can get a motion.
I move as amended accordingly.
I'll second.
Dana, would you please call the vote?
Councilmember Cloven?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Trupiano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. And with that, we move on to Item D. And I will go to, Item D. Item D is a request by myself to discuss a potential solar lease project and provide direction to staff. And so, it says city manager, but I'm getting the wave here. So this one, you know, in a meeting with Oakhurst, they, you know, one of the things that they have been having trouble with they, you know, one of the things that they have been having trouble with over the past period of time is, you know, executing a solar project to ultimately reduce their costs. You know, Oakhurst is a key member of the community. And, you know, I think as a community, it's important that they are successful, just in general, because having a large business like that be unsuccessful is not good for the city. One thing that they were asking for that, you know, would really help them is if they were able to defer, or not defer, mitigate some of their electric costs by implementing a solar program. And so they were looking for potential spots. One of those spots that they thought would be the most ideal happened to be adjacent to the Oakhurst property on city land. And so, at their request, I think that they were declined early on, but I do think that there's potential here. And so I brought this item forward to discuss. The particulars of this arrangement is, obviously, something like this would be complex and very detailed, but from a policy perspective, what I am trying to do here is give policy direction to staff to say that we are interested in exploring the potential of utilizing city-owned land to install some kind of solar array to generate energy. The parameters are fairly broad, because I think that this would be, this would have to be some, you know, a more complex arrangement. But the parameters are, you know, subject to a few guidelines. We would tell staff, "Please proceed to explore this item with the guidelines." So the guidelines that I was considering were, Oakhurst would pay for everything. The city doesn't pay anything. And the cost, so if it were on city-owned property, we're not selling the land, but we could lease the use of the land for a particular purpose at a nominal amount. And then the energy that would be generated would offset Oakhurst electricity costs, and a portion of it would also offset the city's costs. And in the event that we would want to expand this solar facility in some way, the city would have the ability to put in its own panels and tie into the infrastructure that was paid for by Oakhurst to then utilize that energy. So essentially, they are able to help defer their costs. They pay all of it, and if we want to add on to it, we can. And we would also get a portion as well, on their dime. So that's kind of the nature of this. And obviously, this would take negotiation and exploration by staff and, you know, whoever Oakhurst designates to represent them. But this is, it's a broad strokes policy direction. So I had to open it up for questions, if anyone has any, from council, that is.
I have a couple. You mentioned that they were declined early on. By whom?
It's hard to say.
I don't know what that means.
I don't know. That is what they represented, that they were declined. So I'm taking them at their word, that they were declined.
Okay. And then, I definitely agree that we want all of our businesses in town to succeed. So I'm trying to understand, aside from the potential cost savings for them, what else are they getting out of it? And the reason why I'm asking is because I've been a member since 2010. And so I've seen the ups and downs that the club has had, and it's the changes of management, et cetera. And so my concern is, there are rumors that they are, that one of the owners is trying to sell it, and that there's disagreement between the two owners, which is a reason why it's still sitting here. And so I'm just trying to understand what's in it for them, is my first question, besides the offsetting costs. And are they trying to market it? Are they trying to use the solar to market it so that it's more sellable? And what protections staff would have to put that into place in the contract? But I think we all need to be aware of that, because that is a huge concern with people in the community, including other members. So in addition to that, can you tell us what piece of land they're talking about?
Yeah, it's described as the, obviously, it has to be much more specific when we get to the thing. The area around, adjacent to the club property that is around the Black Diamond Trail near the 17th hole. I don't know if that is sufficient to describe the area.
Okay. That's it for my questions. I'll do more discussion things.
All right. I would open this item to public comment. Is there anyone online that has public comment, Dana?
Yes, Mayor Wan, we do have two hands raised among the Zoom attendees. I'll first invite Ed. Ed, I will momentarily promote you to panelist. When prompted, please unmute your microphone. You'll have three minutes to address the council.
All right. I think, hopefully, you can hear me now.
Yes, please go ahead.
Excellent. Thanks. Just a couple of quick questions. Obviously, as you said, there's a lot of details that would manifest, you know, in the process. And I get completely that you're wanting to explore this. And so with that, you know, no assumptions on my part about exactly what the parameters of this are. But I have two general areas of concern or focus, I guess. One is sort of, I don't, I'm not sure exactly what the legal boundaries are of the use of public resources, like public lands or whatever, for the enrichment of or profit, I mean, profit's the wrong word. They're trying to lower costs, in a sense. But it's for their enrichment. So the question, there's a legal question in my mind about use of public property for, or government property for private enrichment. So that's one concern, and I don't know the details about that, but I'm just raising it. Then the other piece is, as you know, the Streetlight Maintenance District has consistently underrun by as little as $30,000 or as much as $60,000. That's $60,000, $60,000 or $70,000 of why the city was in the red to the tune of $129,000 last year. So one of the things that I had wanted to explore, had I come to the council, was would we maybe want to spend some of the ARPA money on solar generation? Because the reason that the Streetlight Maintenance District has been overrun by tens of thousands of dollars is because of increasing utility costs. And so I guess my, this is either a concern or an opportunity, right? If there's somehow that we get some infrastructure out of this for free, and then we're able to put our own solar panels up and defer some of the expenses for the Streetlight Maintenance District and get that back under its allotted budget, that's a win for the city. That's clear. But I guess my question, in my mind, in the back of my mind is, if this is sort of a good thing, then why aren't we using that land ourselves to put solar array up and defer those costs for the Streetlight Maintenance District? All right. So I appreciate your time. Thanks for hearing me out. Back to you, John.
Thank you. Are there other hands raised?
Mayor Wan, we do have two other hands raised in the Zoom room. Roy, I will momentarily promote you to panelist. When prompted, please unmute your microphone. You'll have three minutes to address the council.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I think this is great. This is great. And I'll treat this, what you just spoke about, Jeff, as a vision, okay? A vision of solar. And the last gentleman spoke, started getting the weeds of all this. With all due respect, not to diminish, to be pejorative. But I think it's a vision of solar for, in this case, it happens to be with Oakhurst. But if you expand that beyond Oakhurst, there could be some real potential opportunity for Clayton to explore this, to find out what can or cannot be done with all the ingredients of legality, et cetera, and financial benefit. So I treat what you just brought up, Mr. Wan, as opportunity, vision for Clayton. And I think we need some of that kind of strategic kind of thinking versus the day-to-day kind of tactical thing that go on, you know? But let's raise the site, right? Raise, so I say, go for it, Wan. Explore it. Get staffing, explore it. You know, give ownership to one of staff, somebody in staffing forever, and pursue it. And who knows, maybe Clayton can be the East Bay capital of solar someday. Who knows? But, you know, I think that's that kind of thinking that we need, and so that we can see some potential opportunity and don't get hung up on the, you know, with all this, you know, in the weeds right now. It's so premature. Get the big picture and then start working it, working it hard. Be dedicated and see what can possibly the city can, you know, and being together, can shake loose, even if it's a test, even if it's a trial, and whatever that represents. And, but do the work. Do the front-end work and then see what can, what potentially may be possible. Congrats. I'd love the idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have at least one other individual.
We do have one other speaker in Zoom who would like to speak. Grant, I will momentarily promote you to panelist. When prompted, please unmute your microphone. You'll have three minutes to address the council.
This is Doug Moore. I'm partners with Grant. We are 50/50 owners of Oakhurst, which we bought about four years ago from American Golf. We're very pleased with a lot of the progress that has been made. We've put in a full irrigation system. We just put all-new bunkers in. We spent several million dollars on this. We have no plans at the current time to sell the property. We need to build it up and make it as great as it can be. The solar program, we've been after a permit for the past three and a half years. We have jumped around with locations, because the first location, it was very apparent that all the panels would be seen by 70 or more homes. So we quickly said, "Yeah, we've been good citizens and partners with the city of Clayton. So yeah, we'll move it." We moved it to another location. It just didn't seem to work out as well. There were some environmental factors discussed with $150,000 extra to be put up. And so that just nixed that one. We have a subpar possibility where it's on the internal side of our property. But from the very start, we thought if we were to put this up on this location that Jeff just mentioned a bit ago, that we would be able to put up the infrastructure, put up our panels. You folks from Clayton could tie into it. I can't say that it would be 100% panel cost only. I don't know exactly what it would be. We've been trying to get the city's utility bills, so our solar expert will be able to tell exactly how it would roll out. But we are doing this with no upfront money. This will save us somewhere between $10,000 and $12,000 a month. We've been losing twice as much money as you folks at Clayton have been losing. And so we are doing everything we can to turn it around. I'm very pleased to tell you, for the last couple of months, we're actually showing a very small profit. Part of that is water usage, because it's slow this time of year. But the fact is, we're making progress on all fronts. It's been very frustrating to get the permitting for this solar. And so, yes, I'm hoping we can move forward and that this can be a great advantage. We are not doing this just for ourselves. If you guys tie in to our solar panel project, you will be able to save a lot of money as opposed to doing it yourself. And this is a property, and I invite all to go look at it. We can stake it out like we did last year and see if this works well for all involved. This is Doug Moore, the 50% owner of Oakhurst, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised for public comment on this item?
Mayor Wan, we have no other hands raised on this item.
All right. Then I will close public comment and move it back to discussion. I see your mic is red.
I just want to state that I was aware that for a couple of years, that they've been thinking about a solar project at Oakhurst in my conversations with the ownership. I do want to say that in the past year, in my conversations with city staff, I have not heard one thing about this project mentioned to me by either the city manager or the community development director. So this is the first time I'm hearing about it. So it's not something that's ever been brought to the city council before, or discussed with the city council before. So this is not a matter of our not acting as a council on this item. It's just something that's never been brought to us. So the hearing that there's been multiple conversations and denials, that's kind of news to me. So I'll take him at his word for that, but it's still news to me. That being said, I'm kind of curious where we are with Climatex and their evaluation of some of the options for greening up our city and including solar as a possibility, as they look at their options. And if there is an ability to tie this into a location that could be used, I'm open to the conversation. I want to know a lot more details about where this is and how it impacts the quality of Clayton, whether it be the path on the two diamond trails, Diamond Peak. And there's a lot of questions I have, but I'm open to the dialogue.
Yeah, just a comment on that. I don't think that this has been brought to council, in my recollection. But in conversation with the owners, they raised this, and it sounded fantastic. It sounds like if it works out the way, obviously, if you greenfield it and it works out exactly as intended, then that would be awesome. But really, this isn't a commitment of any kind. It's really just, I want to set policy direction that this is something that we're interested in exploring. And if the details come back and they are good, then, you know, we could take action at that time. There is one thing to keep in mind is that the rules for solar array installation recently were changed, but I think it's the CPUC is the governing body. I'm not sure about that. I think that's the acronym they use. And so that affects solar implementations whereby the credits that you get for sending power back to the grid, the methodology that they're going to use to calculate it is going to change. And I think the deadline for application is in April. If you apply prior to the deadline, you get the old rules, which are better for solar installations. You get a higher credit for sending energy back. After that date, don't quote me on the date, but it's around that date. After that date, you get a lot less credit for sending power back. And the recovery methodology, if you make it underneath, or if you get grandfathered into the old rules, then I think that lasts 20 years. So that's really, so there is somewhat of a time consideration. And it doesn't necessarily need to be installed. I think it's just the application needs to be in. So again, I am not the one with all the details. But that is why this is really, this isn't a detailed discussion. It's more like, this is something that sounds like it may have promise. And let's collectively, I'm asking, if we collectively direct staff to say, this is something that we want to set as a priority to explore.
Yes, I have a comment. Maybe it's due to my longevity in this community over 40 years. And I've seen the development of Oakhurst from the beginnings, before there was even a clubhouse and all that. And participated and chaired the, what was called the Clayton Classic Golf Tournament. 30 years. We played in every one of them. It is a valuable asset to the community. It's had its ups and its downs. It's been public, private, semi-public, semi-private. And now I believe it's all, I'm not a member up there, but I believe it's all private with the exception of the dining services up there, where there's now open to the public. But I think we need to support this effort. And I don't know what that means at this point. But it's appealing to me because, and I live right off of one of the greens. So I get to see a lot of things happening on a regular basis. And I would hate to see it not be successful or more successful. So I don't know what your expectation is. I think we need to explore this and see if there can be benefit, not only to the country club, but also to the citizens of Clayton as well. And I would support anything that accomplishes those goals.
And I would like just to add that I hear their frustration. Three and a half years, they shared with me what their PG&E bills are. If you heard what they were, you would want to fast-track this. I think they are good citizens. I think they've supported this community in so many ways. Golf carts, gift certificates, sponsorships. And I think it's a good thing, and it's definitely worth exploring. And if it all pencils out, kudos to all of us.
May I ask when they shared with you that this was something that they wanted to bring forward since we had never heard of this before as a council?
Yes. I'd have to look at my calendar. It was in November, I think the second week of November, on or about.
Before or after their endorsement of you and Kim?
Well, it was after the election.
Okay. And then why, if time was, I'm not disagreeing that we should do this and have staff move forward, but why didn't you bring it forward before now since we know that we have a short window in which to file this application?
I was made aware of the short window on Friday.
Okay.
That rule just passed. CPUC announced it. The only reason I knew about it was because I signed up for some alert for this rule that was being passed. And I wrote a letter saying, please don't pass this rule. And so it was actually a worse rule before, and so they had changed it. But regardless, that's a completely new development. That was, I think it was Friday.
Okay. The reason why I'm saying all of what I'm saying right now is because I want the owners to understand that you did not have a council before that did not support you. That's false. It had never been brought to us before. And when Y-Green was brought to us, we all did unanimously approve that, for that to go forward. This council does not control when permitting happens. And so I just want to be crystal clear that we didn't hinder any of that. And we're all, it sounds like we're all in full support of staff actually moving forward and investigating this. So I wanted to be clear with everybody that's listening, that was not the case.
I'm going to echo that sentiment. If there's nothing that has been more clear is that I, as a councilman, have been business-friendly in everything that I have done, including my relationships with Oakhurst and my conversations with them. So to think that they couldn't have brought this to us earlier and had it brought to our city staff at a council meeting and endorsing you, thinking that that would cause additional efforts, it's a little challenging because that's not who I've been as a council member and how I represent our city. So I just want to be very clear about that. I'm very business-friendly and just want to throw that out there.
With regard to why it has, why is it brought now? It was brought over a year ago before election. I don't know what the election has to do with it. You question that. But the fact is, they have been getting misinformation from either the city or the Habitat Group on who has responsibility. And it was back and forth. And I sympathize with the trying to get clarity as to how they can move this project forward. Yep, they may have brought it up again now, but I can tell you, they brought it up before because it strained the relationship between the country club, the city, and the community. And I know firsthand how that happened, or not how it happened, but when it did happen. And I think that right now, we ought to take another look and see if there's some way to assist them. They need to be successful because they're not successful only for themselves, but they're successful for our community as well. It's a gem that we own, that we have, not we own, but we have access to. I don't want to see it lost because of certain changes in economics, what have you. And I'd like to see whatever support we can move forward on and find some path that will help get some clarity on what needs to be done to assist them and to assist the community.
If I may, I don't want this meeting to close out without giving staff an opportunity. And so I'm going to just ask you directly. Because right now, it sounds like you're being disparaged, and I don't like it. So staff, have you guys at any point slowed this process down? Been a hindrance to Oakhurst, any of the above of what you just now heard?
So thank you for that question. I'd answer that first by sort of framing that the conversations that we have had with Oakhurst have been about solar on their property. I was never aware, or was it brought to me, about a potential solar project that would involve city property or a lease of city property? And so to the extent that what Mayor Wan brought forward this evening was about a potential opportunity related to city property, that is not something that until, I think it was brought up at the end of the December 6th council meeting, that I was aware there had been any potential. So first, I want to kind of frame this to the extent we're talking about that. That was not brought to the council because I was never aware that there was a desire to talk about a potential lease of city property. So we can certainly take a look at that. It, there are some complexities to it, but we can absolutely take a look at it. The second thing I would say is that we have had ongoing conversations for the last two years with Oakhurst regarding solar on their property. And that is a permitting activity that we would be involved in. That permitting activity was slowed a couple of times over the last two years due to staff turnover. And so in April of 2021, when we had staff turnover on the community development side, we did have a gap in time where we did not take action on that permit, and that slowed the process down. And then we did have some back and forth, as Vice Mayor Diaz mentioned, with respect to the East Contra Costa Habitat Conservancy about what's in, what's out, how big it was, how you calculate the fees. And so there was some question of what the appropriate locations would be to try to minimize those fees. That is something that I would say that collectively on the city side could have gone better on our part. And so we've certainly talked about opportunities to improve how we're handling those things. But all of that, again, was focused on a project on their property. And so that finally did get completed. And I think we certainly had delays that were unfortunate on that, but that is at least moving. This potential question of a city property is an entirely new matter for us to take a look at.
I appreciate you expounding on that. Thank you.
I would just add, in no way is it intended to disparage anyone. Like, I think that everyone who's working on this is always trying to do their best in, you know, in doing their work. So to me, it's really not intended to relitigate how we got to any given place. That doesn't, that's not something that I'm even thinking about. You know, I look at it, when the idea was brought forward to me, I just look at it on the merits. It has nothing to do with an endorsement, has nothing to do with anything. It's really just, to me, this is a business arrangement. If they're willing to pay and we get a benefit and we help the environment and the city can defer costs, that's win-win for everyone. Now, I don't want to make a lot of assumptions about the details because it may turn out that it doesn't pencil out. So who knows? But if we go forward with these parameters and it does happen to work out, that would be fantastic. So if someone presents a good idea, it doesn't matter who it comes from or when. It's really just, that's a good idea, let's do it. So that's really just how I look at it. I look at, I would just take it fresh on the merits on what it is. I do think it's worth exploring. So that's, that's it. So is there, was there any more comment here for discussion?
No, the comments devils the details. There's no details here.
Yeah.
So the reality is, you know, is there a motion to basically?
I'll make a motion.
To approve the conversation? Sure, I make that motion.
Well, I would amend that slightly. And I would make a motion that we direct city staff to work with Oakhurst in exploring the feasibility of an agreement that is described in the background here on the memo with the parameters laid out so that it protects the city. I think that there's a number of things to discuss around there. But I really do want to collectively give policy direction to staff so that they are clear on what we are trying to intend and as it is written here.
I will second that motion, if that's what you're looking for.
That is. Dana, would you call the vote?
Councilmember Cloven?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tripiano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Wan?
Aye, thank you. And with that, I will close this item. Next on the agenda are council items for requests for future meetings. Is there anyone that has any, anything in this item?
I remember some time back, we were going to explore the increased fees at Diamond Terrace. And I didn't want to forget about that. I think it had to do with a certain portion of the population that might be living there in a low-income situation. I don't even know where to begin with that, but I just, I wanted to get that back for a future agenda item.
It is already on our list. Thank you.
Councilmember Cloven, if your mic is on? All right. And with that?
With that, we're going to make a slight amendment, if we could, to recess the city council meeting, go into the successor agency, complete your successor agency calendar, come back to the council meeting, and then go back into closed session. Because otherwise, nobody's going to stay for the successor agency, and we need to get that done. Please.
That's said entirely earnestly. So I would recess the council meeting and move directly into the Clayton Successor and Successor Housing Agency meeting. All right. So I will, for the Clayton Successor and Successor Housing Agency meeting, I will call the order, call it to order, and if we can do a roll call.
Boardmember Cloven?
Here.
Boardmember Tillman?
Present.
Boardmember Tripiano?
Here.
Boardmember Diaz?
Yes.
Chair Wan?
Here. And next is the consent calendar. Is there anyone that would like to remove any item from the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Boardmember Cloven, your mic is on. Did you have? I will ask for public comment on the consent calendar. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment? Is there anyone online that has their hands raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom, Mayor. Chair Wan, Chair.
I will, I will close public comment and look for a motion.
I'll move again.
Second.
Dana, would you call the vote, please?
Boardmember Cloven?
Aye.
Boardmember Tillman?
Aye.
Boardmember Tripiano?
Aye.
Boardmember Diaz?
Yes.
Chair Wan?
Aye. And with that, we will move to public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Is there anyone online?
There is no one online with a request to speak.
Okay, I will close public comment on non-agenda items. There are no public hearings, no action items. Are there any board items for future meetings? With that, I will adjourn this meeting. We will move back to the regularly scheduled meeting that was recessed and go into closed session. Thank you, everyone.
And at the end of closed session for the council's
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
For the council's information, we will come back into open session at the end of the closed session in order to report out and adjourn the meeting. So just, so people don't jump up.
So yes, we will go into closed session now, and I will excuse the members of the audience. Afterwards, we will come back into open session and report out any reportable actions. And if anyone would like a couple-minute recess to do your thing? Yes, we will do a bio break. Take a recess. All right, we are coming back from closed session. And the only reportable action is that the council gave direction to its negotiator, to negotiating things. And that is it. And so now I will adjourn. We are adjourned, 9:50.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah.